Is that me? Uh, yeah, all right. Uh, volume in the back, volume in the back. How we have, yeah, I don't like the static. Like the static.
Definitely this one.
Hello, that sounds better. Feelings, all right, are we? We ready to go? I'm just gonna pretend like they say I'm ready to go and I'm gonna start. Uh, I'd like to call the regular meeting of City of Chattahoochee Hills City Council for November sixth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Let the record show that all council members with the exception of Councilman Schmidt are present to for tonight's meeting. Like to remind anyone who wants to make a public comment tonight to fill out one of the public comment cards that are on the table up front. You can hand those to the city attorney after you fill them out. Uh, there are no public hearings tonight, so uh, the only uh, public comment we will have is that public comment, so you don't have to clarify. Uh, if you have a cellphone, please make sure it's turned off. Uh, people forgot that during the work session, so please don't forget that now, and if you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, justice for all.
First item tonight is approval of the meeting agenda. Uh, we have an executive session that we're adding for personnel issues or anything else? Well, but we clarify when we're gonna actually go out to one. I don't know, new mayor may wanna do it differently. Uh, can I have a motion in a second, please, to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
That stands adopted, next up is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October seventh. Uh, can I get a motion in a second, please, to approve those minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the meetings, uh, minutes for October the seventh.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion or any changes, anybody wants those? If not, all those in favor of adopting the um, minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard everybody, so those are adopted. Uh, next up, we have a report uh, from the Conservancy on farm signage, Lily.
Right, he's pulling up my slides, but I'm Lily Baucham, I'm the CEO of the Chattahoochee Hill Country Conservancy. Um, we spoke a few meetings back and gave an introduction of some of the work we were um, currently working on, but today I'm gonna talk about a agritourism farm signage project. Um, I'll wait until slide, but um, essentially um, we are just sharing some information with you guys about this today, so you are aware. Um, but we are making a request um, to the DMO um, for some funds to help support um, installing farm signs. Um, probably around ten farm signs at various historic or working farms properties um, across Chattahoochee Hills. So, um, yeah, Lily, go to the next.
Are we going the other way?
Keep going. All right, um, so yes, the signs, I'll get into the details, so you can kinda see what they look like. Um, but really, as we're trying to um, support farms in our area and create a cohesive agritourism strategy, um, signage is very important. So this is something we are exploring in partnership with the Convention Visitors Bureau. Um, essentially, we would have an application, which I'll walk through in a little bit. Um, so that farms and historic farms can apply. Um, and then each sign will feature a QR code that links to the CVV website and essentially has our agritourism farm loop on there, so if people want to come visit, like they can do the barn quilt trail. Um, they can visit farms and learn about the history of farming in our area as well. So that would look like creating profiles for the farms individually. Um, and my hope is, you know, we can feature more on there and see how far we can get with some of the funding, but um, it would be tied to the broader strategy. Um, and signs have been something that a lot of farms say they struggle to be able to get um, and wanna create some visibility, so I think it's nice if we can approach this. So it's coordinated branding with the city and shows kind of that this is a broader initiative that we're trying to work on as a destination. Um, so I received quotes from five local companies, the best price ranging from around two thousand to twenty-five hundred. So that'll be about ten or so signs. Um, this will, as I mentioned in the work session, be located um, in the right of way, but all of the branding as well as you can see in the mock-up below. Um, will feature the CVV branding and be consistent with like the wayfinding sign branding. Um, we wanna make sure these are durable, um, but also, you know, the inevitability of um, signs, farms changing hands um, or changing their brand or different things they are doing. Um, these are, it would be a hanging metal sign that can be replaced um, and changed, and so you see the sign below that says open to the public. Um, not all farms will be open to the public or want that option, so it could say things like historic farm. Um, also, if there's a U-PIC operation or agritourism operation that's open, you can essentially, you guys have probably seen this at other farms. Um, but do additional dropdowns even featuring products, um, but it would all be consistent. And this is a local vendor, um, so we wanna make sure it's all fade resistant and durable and matches the branding, um, and then the QR code will be on there as well. Um, so with the Conservancy and our board, um, we would develop an application so that is open to anyone to apply. Um, we're obviously working with a limited number of funds, um, so we will have to identify, you know, having a good mix, I think of some historic farms that have been in the area, but ones particularly that really wanna drive traffic out to their farm, um, and if all goes well, hopefully we can add on, but um, we want to see what the interest is from farms out in the community, um, and hopefully, you know, by having this application in place, we can also assess some of that. Um, and I think that's, that's most of the eligibility, but it will be open to everyone. All right, go to the next slide. Um, so just, you know, these are a lot of things that Chris and I talk about, but really, we're trying to, you know, drive agritourism out here and explore what that looks like. We think this signage project will create a lot more visibility, and as we're able to do future events, like something I discussed before was trying to do an art and ag farm tour. Um, we need the signage to be able to get people from place to place, so we think that this will be a really good start um, of kind of showcasing the farms that we have, but giving people the ability to learn also online. Um, so we've got the meeting today, um, we've, I've discussed this um, with the CVB and we'll obviously um, be discussing with the DMO. I need someone to tell me what that acronym stands for, so we can.
Destination Marketing Organization.
Yes, yes, um, to confirm, you know, the amount, but um, based on the budget, um, I would support in-kind developing all the farmer profiles and managing the process and really just putting the funds directly to purchasing signs. Um, it's okay, it may still be done. Um, so yeah, um, we have the vendors, um, we would do the application to make sure um, we are able to get all the information we need to put the signs together. Some farms have logos, some don't, so there'll be a lot of branding that we wanna make sure is consistent and that the Conservancy and the CVB all feel good about it before we go to production and installation, so. Um, that is the background, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's a project we really think is a good stepping stone to some of the future things we wanna do with agritourism.
I have one other question, um, what kind of commitment to the farms? Will it be like a two-year or three-year, they have to stay in business or something like that, or is there any kind of commitment?
From their perspective?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I think with the application, we'd probably look at the history of the farm being here, how long have they been in production? Do we think that they're gonna continue to be, and what's their kind of investment in this area, because farms do come and go? Um, so I think that's something we can consider as part of the application process, what that looks like. I think if they're just starting a farm and don't planning on staying, that's probably not as good of an investment, so that'll be criteria that I think our selection committee will weigh, but that's a great point.
Yes, can, can you just speak quickly to the, the, the number ten as a sort of starting number, and it said or so? Uh, but I take it that the CVV is prepared if there are additional applications that seem worthy, there'll be.
Yeah, so each sign costs, and this is the best price I could get, two thousand to twenty-five hundred, but with installation. So that with thirty thousand puts us around twelve, but I think giving some contingency will probably be closer to ten. Um, given the number of working farms that I know, um, and historic farms, I think that number will be mostly okay. But again, we wanna have this application, so we can see what's, what's the pipeline? Do we have additional farms that really need them, and what kind of other funding can we try to get to allocate toward that?
I mean, given our preference for having farming in the open space, right, having them be economically viable is a really important thing, and so the kind of thing that helps them drive traffic is obviously super useful, so thank you very much for putting that together, so that's a very positive addition. Um, anything else, all right, thanks very much, Lily.
Thanks, Lily.
All right, next up is a uh, financial update, we're doing staff reports, financial update from the city manager. Getting around much better.
I know, that's great stuff. Um, man, I wish that was, there's ideas that come up from people that I said, man, I wish that was my idea, that's one of them. The farm signage is, it's gonna be just additional wayfinding, and, and when we talk about the DMO um, with the funding and is, it's hotel motel tax, so it doesn't cost taxpayers any money unless you stay at one of our ends or Airbnbs, so. Anyway, uh, onto financials, you uh, you have a copy of, with all the financials, but the, the, I, I have a bigger copy because it's easier for me to see, but the one that has the colors in it, I always like to go by. I just wanna point out, if, if you do pay attention at the very bottom, I always like to keep a running balance of what's in the, in the bank, and it has under September, five point one million, that should be, uh, it's four point nine in September, it's five point one, that should be down one line, uh, so that's not, so, so you know, there's five, at the time of this report, five point one million dollars in the bank, but wow. Starting at the revenues at the top, this uh, goes to October twenty-seventh, so we're about thirty-two percent through the fiscal year. And uh, so I wanna point out things like um, insurance premium tax, you know, we budget for that, we get it once a year, and we never know what that is, we just estimate it based on previous years, and it was we estimated two eighty, it came in at three twenty, we never know why, but we'll take it, you know, so we're a hundred and fourteen percent collection, so that's all you're gonna see, that's this one check, and so that's there. Um, I, I mentioned, I, I mentioned every month, I guess, L-MIG, you know, we're always the first applicant in, the first, we get the money when it comes local maintenance improvement grants, kind of a competition with myself. But we've got the additional monies that we got from them that they exited out, and so that, that's going toward a lot of our, our paving projects and specifically gravel road maintenance. And I always pull out at the very bottom of our revenue of the budget in a year-to-date, um, where we're at as far as um, the, the reserves that we, we have, the, the running fund balance, as I call it. I pulled it out because I'm like, what percentage of we collected revenue, so we've collected twenty-six percent of the revenue, twenty-six point eight, even though we're thirty-two point three, three percent to the fiscal year. That's not unusual, because we, you know, we're just getting into tax collection uh, time coming up here soon, so we're always gonna be below in revenues uh, this time of year. And then, of course, the other sources, hotel motel T-spots that we have coming in, we got the fund balances, and, and those are two months behind with the T-spots and hotel motel, but I have those available for you, and and going down into, I don't, I can go with detail if you need to, need me to, but going down into the um, the expenditure portion, that's all your departments, that's your operations stuff that we talk about. And I think I'm practicing going a little bit more detail, cuz we know next year we'll, we have some new uh, council members up there, so, uh, and also it's good information for you to know. You'll look down and you'll see, you know, areas that have a higher percentage of um, expenditures, and that's things like our non-departmental insurance risk management stuff, and that comes in, you know, at, on a quarterly basis, so it, it looks like it's higher, but at the end of the year, it'll be a hundred percent at, by the end of next June, before the next fiscal year, and um, you'll notice also under some, some departments, um, let's see, three, I think I got that, that police, oh, I gotta go across the line here. Oh, let me skip on down, we are eighteen point two percent in expenditures total, so uh, at the, at, when we're supposed to be thirty-two percent, we're eighteen percent uh, in expenditures, so we're looking good there. And the rest of the financials are, are just a tally of the above, uh, with the exception of hotel motel T-spots and such, but I, happy to answer any questions about the financials for this month or go any more detail, but I'd just like to touch on those high points I just did, and happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? That's good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robbie, uh, next up is a fire department report.
Chief Pat.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens and guests, Chief Brett's out of town, so I'm presenting his report today. He's uh, printing reports, they're available for you, each council member and mayor have a report, there are reports on the table for others. The uh, call volume has been increasing, October was an extremely busy month for us. We've experienced an above-average number of fires, NEMS incidents with increased automatic aid response through our neighboring jurisdictions of Palmetto and South Fulton. Presently, we are in track to record more incident responses in two thousand and twenty-five than has occurred in the history of the department. Chief Brett continues to address the improvements with two vital service partners, Fulton nine-one-one dispatch and ambulance service providers, Grady Healthcare. Also, as a reminder, the outdoor burn ban is lifted, but daily permitting is through the fire department. You can contact Georgia Forestry for large acreage burns, but you also still have to contact the fire department. For those of you who live in agricultural zoning, that does not give you permission to have agricultural burns or agricultural permits. Those are only given to people who are harvesting crops. So just cuz you're in a agricultural zoned area does not mean you're having agricultural burn, and you will have to contact the fire department for a permit. And that's all we have on the report.
Do you have any questions or comments? That, that was the quickest one I think we've ever had. I wasn't, I wasn't even ready. No, it's perfect. I feel like I need to read something that Greg wrote on here, but um, next up is a police department report from Chief Degu.
Good evening, council, mayor, um, citizens. You have the police department uh, report before you, and I did something a little bit different this time, went in a little more depth, because as Chief McGarrett said, they've been busy, so have we, this is probably one of the busiest months of October that I have, I have seen in recent. Um, if you just look at our dispatch calls between this time and last year, it's almost over two hundred and fifty more calls um, between last year and this year. Um, traffic citations, almost four times as many, but also the cases that were working. Um, I don't know if you saw our little spot on the news, but we were on channel, channel two twice. Um, for, for some incidents that, that occurred around the city, so we've been, we've been very busy, we, we've also been busy assisting our neighboring agencies. Um, Sergeant Carter assisted with a wanted felon in Palmetto. And uh, my understanding is they saw him and he, and he gave up.
Shocking, shocking.
Anyway, um, but no, it's just, it's been a very busy, very busy month, and um, my guys have been working a lot to make sure that the citizens stay safe and uh, very proud of them, so, any questions?
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
And, and thank you, Sergeant Carter. Just in case anybody doesn't know who we're talking about, and it's, it's possible that, no, just stop it. Would you stand up for us, please? Sir, please stand up to be acknowledged, all right. You, you'd give up too.
Well, Tom, Tom, while he's standing up, I just wanna say something, this past weekend, we participated in um, Six City Motorcade. And when we talk about Sergeant Carter, on his off day, he came and participated with us and his wife, so I really appreciate you from the bottom of my heart.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna use yet another opportunity to say that we have the best team of people working here of any, any city in the Atlanta region, and it doesn't matter how big or small they are, we have the best team here and at every level, so. We've got the bracket, we've got the bracket right here, right? All right, moving right along to a public works report, and, and now we've got them wound up, so like, you know.
Easy now. Short, short ain't a protected class, I have been told.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, council and residents of beautiful Chattahoochee Hills, it's my honor to go ahead and give him my uh, monthly report, uh, really quick, let's see here. Have you, have you noticed there's heating in there in here? And, and it works. Someone told me earlier it's too cold in here.
I'm hot.
I've heard, that's the first time I've heard that one. It, it's complete, done, uh, the contractors come in, did an excellent job. I'm very proud of the money that we saved by doing this. Uh, we come in way, way under what projected was, the projection of cost. Um, also, update on the community center, we've had a pre-construction meeting, pre-bid meeting on, on site a couple of weeks ago, a lot of questions, Dana's worked really hard to answer the questions, getting them back out to them. That's coming up soon, uh, hopefully that'll be presented in the Decembers, council meeting for vote, correct Dana? Okay, uh, let's see, last, last of all, uh, Monday, we'll be starting sidearm, the grass, thank goodness the grass has stopped growing, ooh. It's been a, it's been a year, uh, so we'll be side, sidearming throughout the city, cutting the trees back, it gets a better view. When you go down the road and you see the deer that decided to dart out in front of you, maybe you, you got five extra seconds for that. Uh, that's, that's really all I have, uh, I'll be back up here for something else at here shortly, but do you have any questions for me, anyone? Anyone, speak now, thank you very much.
Next up is a community development report from Director Morton, sorry, Mike.
The mayor and council, you have the um, community development report in front of you. Um, compared to last year, half as many permits issued, half as many for new homes, um, permits nine versus eighteen, new homes uh, one versus two a year ago. Um, inspections are uh, not down too much, uh, but uh, uh, not many new permits going out these days. Um, we have a planning commission meeting on Thursday, exactly one week from tonight at seven o'clock, six o'clock work session on that agenda, we'll have uh, two public hearings. One for uh, the Warble and Ring hamlet, which is on tonight's agenda for first read, and the other is for the RICO hamlet that was deferred back in June. And um, they have submitted a revised site plan that uh, that shows um, quite a bit less density than, than the original plan. So those will be, both be on for public hearing at the um, uh, Thursday, November thirteenth, um, planning commission meeting. Um, at that same June meeting where the RICO hamlet was deferred, there was also a gas station proposed up in um, in Campbellton that was also deferred. That one, I'm expecting will be back on the agenda, uh, January, February, January Planning Commission, uh, February City Council, they have um, just uh, worked on another revision of their site plan. Um, I won't comment on it, but um, they also wanna hold a little bit of community engagement in the meantime, and then they have, I guess, some of their own personal travel plans that they're trying to work around, so we'll see them in January's uh, planning commission and um, uh, February City Council. Uh, finally, the only other thing, but very important thing, we have a, a wording of a contract to uh, to work on our comp plan on the agenda tonight. Just want everybody to keep their eyes open, we wanna get working on this comp plan um, as soon as possible, everyone. Um, pay attention to um, news from the city, uh, we'll be scheduling meetings on that comp plan, uh, we have to be done in less than, less than a year. Um, we'll, we'll need to have it adopted in um, in October in order to satisfy uh, the state's calendar, and um, we'll be having a lot of meetings coming up. Um, uh, a few at the end of this year, and then really getting cranked up early next year, so please pay attention, um, we may have some stuff coming up pretty soon.
Awesome, thanks, Mike, any questions for Mike? But I, I need, I need y'all to settle down now, um, economic development report from Director Montesinos.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor, council and residents and family and friends, um, I like to keep my reputation as being the good news director, yeah, for Rodney and the rest. Uh, broke my report down into seven elements, it's time to be a little more concise. Um, I've been working for the past eight months on a strategic marketing plan for the city, which evolved into a tourism plan, which includes marketing as the element. Uh, what started off as a ten to fourteen-page document in, in the draft, has evolved into a forty-page document, which is much more, much more robust and detailed. Um, I'm currently uh, having that reviewed by my peers and other colleagues uh, for content and additional things that we might be able to bring into the document to make it even more robust before we bring it to the Convention Visitors Bureau. Secondly, also related to CVB, uh, we've been working very diligently with Paradise Marketing on the website development, and that's coming along very well, we're uh, meeting next week to discuss the structure of the content and uh, the performance of the, of the website, and uh, we're excited to have that done probably early next year. Uh, grants and funding, uh, Daryl mentioned about the uh, Cedar Grove uh, bids that are coming in uh, in a couple of weeks. And we're also waiting for those bids because we're going to apply for a T-Mobile hometown grant to cover half of that cost or at least reimburse us for half of the cost what is uh, currently be requested. Um, second, uh, next, um, I did a presentation uh, on behalf of the Community Development Department on the Buchart Farm redevelopment and rezoning, which uh, includes the addition of uh, I believe it was seventy-six hundred or so acres of zone property. Um, but also more importantly brings about fifty-four hundred acres in uh, green space conservation. Also with respect to TPL, also adds ten miles of uh, of, of the New Riverland or the Riverland, Chatty Riverlands Trail system. The Georgia Economic Police Banking Collaborative uh, Team uh, attended a workshop early or in the month of October. And uh, we are proceeding with our demonstration project, which is replacing the signage at the Cedar Grove Community Center, which we are then integrating uh, some of the barn quilt art to make that part of the uh, the overall uh, installation chain. Partnerships, uh, we talked about this earlier with Lily. Uh, we have had a fantastic relationship with the Chattahoochee Country Conservancy. And we've more recently expanded uh, those partnerships to include the Cerrone Art Farm. Uh, we're working on some uh, projects about bringing in uh, uh, music festivals and some additional artists from around the region. Uh, we've also forged a very recent uh, strong relationship with Preserve Life. Uh, they're really uh, mirroring our brand with respect to wellness and organics and nature. And uh, I think we're going to establish a really great relationship. They're coming back to the Convention Visitor Bureau next uh, week also. She would do a presentation. And the last thing I looked at was uh, what our next steps are in the, in the months ahead. So we're still working to finalize the MOA with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the South Fulton Transportation Comprehensive Master Plan Update. That's a mouthful. Um, as well as uh, working with uh, community development through the complane process to analyze the opportunities and processes related to um, short-term rentals, uh, farm stays and alternate types of accommodations that we can help bring in to support uh, our tourism and our local economy. So that's about it.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments?
All right.
Thanks, Chris. Excuse me. The next item on the agenda is public comment, which is the time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the city council to provide their input and opinions on any matter not scheduled for its own public hearing. We don't have any, so it's whatever you want to talk about. Uh, when your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone directly to the council, first stating your name and address for the record. You're allowed three minutes for your personal remarks. Rick, do we have any comments?
Hey, y'all. I don't public speak, so bear with me. Uh, Carrie Carter, six-two-seven-zero, Cochrane Mill Road. I wanted to take a minute tonight to speak now that elections have concluded. Having grown up here, I know many of you. Though there are still some I have not met. Over the past year, I have witnessed a rise in the hate and division. I hope and pray that things will change now that the elections are behind us. While my family and I may not be considered a legacy family, after living here for over twenty years, I hope to stay long enough for my kids to be recognized as such. I hope to leave a legacy that can, we can all be proud of in this community. The state of current events is not reflective of the Chat Hills I know and cherish. The Chat Hills I love are far removed from the hate, biased opinions and discord that some individuals express. I remember a time when our community united for a common cause, regardless of where we lived or how we lived. We were all neighbors and we all had a diverse community where friendships flourished. Contrary to what a few may claim on Facebook, some of the kindest people reside in our rural areas, Cerrone B and neighborhoods. My family operates a trucking business in the city and they've assisted our fire chief in delivering water when the need came up. We've weathered economic challenges and I myself am starting a small business here. This is truly my home. I hope to see our community come together again rather than engage in a divisive rhetoric at every opportunity. Unfortunately, there are certain individuals who enjoy twisting narratives to fit their agendas and those same people choose to complain about small businesses simply trying to thrive. Businesses that have long been supported by local neighbors. The focus on where you are from has become problematic. Prior to this year, it didn't matter what your background was or is, we were all just neighbors and that's how it should remain. I can genuinely say that my neighbors are some of the best. We look out for one another. People choose to live here for the tranquility and safety of our community, thanks in part to our police, who do their utmost to protect every citizen with the resources they have. While development is necessary, it must be approached thoughtfully. Many families, including myself, moved here for farmland, peace and quiet. I share all of this to express my hope that moving forward, everyone will treat one another with dignity and respect. Let's stop the cycle of hate and division and instead treat others as we wish to be treated. You don't need to raise your voice or spread negativity to make your point. Kindness goes much farther. Remember you catch more with honey. This goes for both sides.
I think that was just fine, public speaking. Just, just saying.
My name is Hannah Brandis and I live at two forty-one Mottolane, Chattahoochee, Georgia. I believe we're at an inflection point in Chattahoochee's history. A history that began a thousand years ago when the Muskogee first farmed this land and named it Chattahoochee. The Muskogee were driven out in the mid-eighteen hundreds. And by the eve of the Civil War, there were hundreds of enslaved people here. Just a few weeks ago, I was at Deer Creek Farm on Hutchinson Ferry and saw where some of those enslaved had been buried in unmarked mounds. Our very modern history began with the incorporation of Chatt Hills in two thousand and seven. Many deserve mention for their role in creating the place we live in today. In remembrance, let me speak the names of a few who have passed away. Lieutenant Michael Vod, who helped staff and train the first Chatt Hills Police Department and was killed in the line of duty. Larry Keith, Mamay and Chuck Miller and Hugh Tyer, the city forester, were all instrumental in the city's formation. Mulsey Trimble, who organized the roadside cleanup for years. Chatt Hills forever crash queen. Clifford Blizzard, Parks Commissioner and Advocate, naturalist, educator and wisdom keeper. Tonight, this room is full of good people who have created what we hold dear. But I would be remiss not to mention one in particular for his generous and consistent visionary leadership since two thousand and twelve. Tom Reed's stewardship of our culture, our economy, even our spirit will be greatly missed. I'm so glad there will be more time to acknowledge you going forward. I began by saying this is an inflection point. I use those words because while we stand on a solid foundation, the table where decisions were made has not been as inclusive as it will be going forward. One thousand five hundred and sixty people voted in this election, almost twice that of any other in our history. We just elected a woman to the top job. That is milestone. And forth, we will have two city councillors that are black women. That's a milestone. We, the people, just inserted a new leaf to the Chatt Hills table.
Good evening, City Council and staff. My name is Angela Addison, District Two, City Councilwoman Elect. Fifty-four, fifty-one, Two Hills Drive. I just want to take this time to really applaud um, all of the citizens of Chattahoochee Hills. Um, we had a remarkable uh, campaign election season. As she mentioned, over fifteen hundred people voted. And that's quite remarkable, regardless of their position, regardless of what, who they voted for. They participated in the democratic process because they believed in something to their core. And that's the only thing that's going to really drive us forward is that we have people who are people of conviction, but also people of intention. Um, that intention is going to be driven by us really getting on the same page as to what the character of this city looks like. I applaud the young lady who spoke first. Um, I could hear in her voice the emotions that come from recognizing what something should be and the task at hand to make sure that it, that it is that, what it should be. And so I want to thank you guys for the opportunity um, to serve, for embracing me as a resident and just for allowing people to be people. Um, and to come together, I keep it neighborly is really personal to me. Because I've said before, my neighbors for my whole life, from the moment I was born at Grady, looked like me. And to be around individuals who are not, not just because they're white, some are Asian, some are, you know, Indian. Some, you know, are from the West Indies. That's where, yes, are you going to find that, but in Chattahoochee Hill? Where else are you going to find that where people can celebrate together? Because they have one common goal and that's to express their love for their city and how much they really appreciate just being a part of, of a growing and loving community. So I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to not only be a resident, but to be an integral part of making sure that Chattahoochee Hills remains a city of intention. Thank you.
John.
So I'll be, I'll be very brief. I, I just wanted to uh, call. My name is John Knight. It's, and I live on Selborn Lane. And um, I just wanted to um, submit comments for the record that I sent to the city attorney earlier this week. Um, that relate to the balancing that council needs to do around the issue of speech and the ethics plan. That is, it's necessary, as I pointed out in the written remarks, which I also sent to uh, Councilman Lightzy, to balance the interest in order with the constitutional protections on speech. And in particular, I believe that what has been said by Councilman Light, Lightzy in his newsletters and by many people following those newsletters, that individuals at the last council meeting did not have the right to address individual council members is not the way that we should interpret the existing rules or the existing rules should be written so as to protect the constitutional protections on, on political speech. The ability to address a council member, to, to make comments to that council member directly are, that is the foundation of political speech. And, and, and so I just want to emphasize that constitutional protection and urge the council to balance carefully. Now, I realize fully that this relates to the civility um, pledge that's been adopted, um, which I think is, is acceptable. Um, you know, there are lots of issues here. I, I realize also that I'm arguing essentially to let Renee Prince say whatever she wants to say. So um, I, I realize that I'm just taking a particular position at this point. Um, and, and there's a balancing that the council needs to do, but I didn't see that balancing going on uh, in, in uh, Councilman Light's newsletter, so that's why I spoke. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council and staff.
And that was the last um, public comment. All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll move along to some new business items. Uh, first up is twenty-five dash oh-five-three, which is council consideration to approve uh, the acceptance of a ten thousand dollar donation from Ron Novak and Patricia Lesko. Um, and I think Robbie is going to.
Paperwork. But yes, uh, Mayor and Council, this is a donation to the city uh, in uh, the amount of, of ten thousand dollars from um, Pat Lesko and her, and her husband. And the reason why has to be a resolution is because it's a donation. I'm sure she would prefer this to be, you know, anonymous uh, as we talked about it, but I said, we can't do it. We can't, it's a donation. So we have that resolution order for us to accept those funds that go to the park. So uh, I'm sorry that we added you on that donation. This is part of our procedure.
Yeah, we, we don't do well at the, the keeping things quiet that are good things. Does anybody have any questions for Robbie? Uh, let me go ahead and get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-five dash oh-five-three and accept that amazing donation.
It's an honor to make motion twenty-five zero-five oh-three. Accept that.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. In the, in the vein of not making a fuss, would you please stand up for us? We have a, a motion in a sec. No, stay standing, stay standing. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty-five dash oh-five-three, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. This is going forward and, and this is a, an amazing project that the uh, City Parks Commission put together to have an all-access trail. Uh, you know, we have all these beautiful trails throughout our parks, all through the community. But most of them are set up in a way that if you're in a wheelchair, if you're pushing a stroller or whatever, you can't use them. And they wanted to have this trail, uh, and it's in the newer Riverlands Park where you can get anybody out and anybody can enjoy this beautiful park with beautiful views over the river, beautiful cemetery, all the things that are out there. And uh, I just, I, these parks are so amazing already and it's all so fantastic. And uh, again, totally going to ignore Pat Lesko and her husband who did this amazing thing, but they did this amazing thing. I'm going to do it again. Twenty-five dash oh-five-four, uh, council consideration to approve an archaeological investigation for a couple of our historic houses. And uh, Ron, do you want to talk to us about that?
Yes. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a item that originated from the Historic Preservation Commission. They are recommending um, that the council approve uh, archaeological investigations for two sites. Uh, this comes from um, their uh, plan to do seven total sites um, by Archaeo Spatial Analytics, which is the contractor that the city council hired back in July um, for this type of work. So for every one of these projects, we're going to be coming back in the future um, when we're ready to graduate on to the next step in the process. And Brian um, from the Historic Preservation Commission is here as well.
Brian, is there anything else you'd like to add? Wait till you get all the way to the microphone.
We just want to thank you for your support in the commission. Uh, this is a uh, phase two. Council approved a, the vendor to an RFQ process back in the summer. And these are the two um, bundling two projects that are going to be using ground penetrating radar. And they will hopefully uh, give us um, the location of the Owen Cochran Hill Ruins, Cochran Mill Park and also the um, outbuildings. They have been uh, at the Beaver Lee Fountain and chose that one specifically because that has been our North Star uh, from commission activities.
Thank you. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty-five dash oh-five-four, which is that archaeological investigation agreement?
I make a motion that we adopt twenty-five dash zero-five-four.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Does anybody have any questions? Not all those in favor, please, of adopting twenty-five dash oh-five-four, please say aye.
Aye.
That was everybody. That stands approved unanimously. Next up is the historic marker. And Ron, you want to talk about that? You may as well stay. You may as well stay. Brian?
All right, sure. So the Historic Preservation Commission also is recommending the council approve the purchase of a historic marker. Total cost of that would be $4,609.82. This will go on the Scout Hut just down the road here, and it would be the same as what we currently have in front of multiple sites throughout the city, including right here at City Hall. The vendor is Lake Shore Industries, and the funding would come from the Historic Preservation Commission's budget, and that is an example of it just up there that the mayor has.
Sorry, it's allegedly small, but. All right. Let me get a motion in a second, please. Do you want to say anything else about this one?
Just just to say that this is the fourth marker that you all have supported. And as discussed in the work session, we will work with Gerald to locate optimal location that will allow maximum visibility. That will do that before it's obviously before it's installed.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty five dash oh five five?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I know the people up here have heard this story before, and they're bored of it, but I'm going to say it because there may be new people in the audience. When I was a kid, my parents were divorced. I would go see my dad once a month, and we did a road trip every time I went. And he was that guy that, as we'd be driving down any road, a historic sign would come up, and he'd scream across four lanes of traffic to slide up in front of it and read it, literally every single one. And so I just love the fact that we're doing these all over the place. It's it's so significant because it gives you the opportunity to see what is there, what was what was the history of the spot. And we have so much history in this town. So glad that we do stuff like this. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty five dash oh five five, please say aye.
Aye.
That one stands adopted unanimously as well. Thank you so much.
I would like to say, on behalf of the commission, this may be our last time to present to this mayor and council, and we we thank you all for your support for our commission. And I also want to thank Ron Johnson for being an amazing staff leader on our commission. Thank you.
Next up is twenty five dash oh five six, which is council consideration to approve surplusing some public works equipment.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council, this is the old equipment that we've had for many, many years that is unoperable, and we we sending it along with some police vehicles and some fire apparatuses that are no longer in use to auction, to be auctioned off by a couple hundred people to be able to bid on them. And so we get the most money for stuff that's just sitting around. Money will go back into reserves once we get the check.
Fantastic. All right. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to adopt twenty five dash oh five six, which is the surplusing of that list of public works equipment?
Making motion to adopt twenty five dash zero five six.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor of adoption, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous as well. I love it when I can hear everybody. Next up is another one of these don't make a fuss ones, twenty five dash oh five seven, which is council consideration to approve a resolution to accept some land for trail access and park access. Mike?
Mayor and Council, in 2022, Keith Ruth platted a format subdivision on Hutchinson Ferry Road that you all approved. Concept plan, planning commission approved the preliminary plat. At the time of those approvals, there was an easement proposed on the property that would allow a connection between Hutchinson Ferry Road and the New Riverlands Park, which I'm not sure was named at the time. By the time the property owner got around to the final plat, he said, well, why don't I just give it to you? And so platted it with the dedication of the land, wasn't identified necessarily as park or right of way, so the city can treat it either way. But it's 4.26 acres, something, sorry, I've lost the number, 4.28 acres, and could provide a connection between Hutchinson Ferry Road and New Riverlands Park. And the plat was approved and recorded, but we just never wrapped up the process getting councils approval to accept the property and signing the deed. And so this will take care of that. And I thought Mr. Ruth.
I was going to say, I know Keith well enough that he's going to hate this, but please stand up, Keith, as we go through this process. Can it can? So this is, you know, we're very close to having an alignment that would have a trail all the way from Hutchinson Ferry Park to the Riverlands Park. And this is a piece that's very important for making that happen. And again, you know, the offer of an easement was a huge thing, but then actually donating the land is just that much more. And so it's it's something to be absolutely fantastic. Can I get a motion in a second again? Sorry, to adopt twenty five dash oh five seven?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion in a second on this adoption to accept this property. All those in favor of accepting it, please say aye.
Aye.
And Rick, if you would just, I mean, just one more time, if you would, please.
Stand up, Keith. And Keith Ruth, thank you very much.
And and Rick, I have a question for you. The other thing that we talked about is happening next month, right?
Yes.
Yes. I still am going to clap for Diana Wilson.
And and I want I want everybody to come back next month to find out why. All right.
Next up is twenty five dash oh five eight, very important item, council consideration to award a contract to develop the city's 2026 comp plan.
That's right. I mentioned in my staff report, the comp plan process starting up. We sent out an RFP and got five qualified responses, and a team, an internal team reviewed them, scored them, and the the winning applicant team was Kimly Horn. And so our request is for city council to approve awarding the comp plan process contract to them and to approve the mayor signing a contract as approved by the city attorney, which we expect to have a draft in hand, I think, tomorrow, a first draft.
So on twenty five dash oh five seven, I'd like a motion in a second, please, to adopt this item. And as we adopt it, give me the authority to sign that agreement contingent upon city attorney's approval. So motion in a second for that.
Make a motion to accept twenty five dash zero five eight with that contingent.
Second.
Is that good for you?
Yep.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this? I I just, before we vote, want to highlight the point that has come up already in a couple of the public comments and that Mike made. This is incredibly important. The comp plan is the opportunity that the community has to come out and make sure that their voices are heard on how they want this community to work and and, you know, the details of how the zoning and all of that work. It's incredibly important that people participate. The worst thing that can happen is people don't show up and then say, well, nobody told me, right? I mean, you have to come. You have to come and and participate. So please plan to do that. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor of adopting twenty five dash oh five eight, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed nay? That carries unanimously.
And if if I piggybacking what the mayor said, and I sort of said earlier, you know, we've had a couple of comp plan updates. You have to do it every five years. Last two have been fairly light. We're really hoping to dig in this year, but really, really want people to participate.
And and some more detail to what Mike just said. So our first comp plan was what they call a major comp plan update. We brought in outside experts to help, not as much as it probably could have. We didn't have much money at the time. The next two were the interim ones that were done by the Atlanta Regional Commission. Those are intentionally lighter touch updates. The one that we're doing again now, outside consulting firm, much deeper, much more meeting, much more expert opinion coming in, you know, to help advise on some of the issues that we have. It's going to be a much more robust process, a lot more opportunities to engage. So again, please make sure to do that. Next up is a first read, twenty five dash oh five nine. Again, Mike, we're not acting on this. It's just a first read.
This is, that's right, first read, first read only. It is a proposed residential hamlet, proposal to rezone 100.835 acres from RL Rural District to the HMR Residential Hamlet District. That district is no longer available for new applicants, but this application came in before the code was changed. The proposal is for 40 new residential units that are arranged in two main clusters and a couple smaller clusters. There's also a large central civic space right in the middle of the of the property. There's about an acre of land for non residential uses that would include maker spaces, a gallery, a market, and a cafe. The plan shows 80.98 acres of open space and civic space. It shows all the required buffers, although there is some clearing around the existing houses. There are three existing houses that front Rico Road. There is some clearing around those houses, but there's plenty of wooded land behind them to have an effective buffer. And the only other real feature to discuss at this point is the connections to Rico Road and the Caps Ferry Road on the other side. Caps Ferry Road is unpaved, but the way the site lays out, it could be allowed. Sometimes we we limit access on unpaved roads, but the uses near that entrance are not so intense that that we would need to do that in this case. There will be a public hearing on this application in one week at the planning commission meeting, and the applicant, as we heard, the applicant's here, if you have questions or would like to hear from them. And they are planning a couple of open houses, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch the second one, but the first one is this coming Tuesday at the at the site. December 2nd is the second one. What time on Tuesday?
Six to eight P M. Second.
Okay, six to eight P M. This is just just south of the Parkway on Rico Road on, if you're going from from City Hall on the right side, and the address of the property, seven three.
Seven two nine five.
Seven two nine five.
Rico Road.
Rico Road, that's right.
That's right.
There's a flyer you can find on on the city's website that'll tell you about those open houses.
Good, great. Thanks, Mike. Anybody have any questions for Mike or the applicant while they're here? All right. Thanks. And that is it. We have no public hearings. So next up is mayor and council comments, and I do think it is your turn this time. Really?
Well, I just want to say good evening and thanks for everyone coming out tonight. I am glad the election is over. I just want to say this Saturday, we are going to have our Fall Festival from 12 P M. to 3:30. And also, we have an amazing display in the hallway for veterans, and we want to honor veterans also on Saturday morning around 12 o'clock. But Ms. K. Long, if you get the opportunity, please go out and look at the display. It is so awesome. And to the staff and everyone, thank you and looking forward for y'all working a little bit harder on Saturday. But thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you.
Thanks. Camille?
Yep. First of all, I want to say thank you so much to Diana and Pat and Keith. I mean, that's amazing that people are contributing for public access. So, I mean, we talk about it all the time, that our parks and access are so important and that our own citizens are making it happen. It's really kind of amazing because I know a lot of folks that won't give a penny away, you know? And so it is just huge, and and people into the future will really recognize that when the paths and and trails get put in in these places because it'll make it amazing. And also the heartfelt comments tonight in the public comment, I got kind of teary-eyed. I'm a little tired, but for good reason. But it means a lot when citizens share how they're feeling about things and speak from the heart because I believe a lot of what folks said tonight, as far as how we treat each other, is so important. And it and it means a lot that you stand up and and make those comments. Also want to congratulate District Two and District Four, Angela Addison and Tim Southard, who is not here tonight. He's in a play. He's a jack of all trades, very busy. I know everyone is busy, and that what that's what's so special is you stand up to to participate and serve in public service. So I know Angela's here tonight and want to congratulate her. And I personally want to thank everyone that came out and voted. It was just a lot of engagement from the public. And I just felt like, you know, I've known some folks, but I've met some new folks along the way. And a lot of it for me was neighbors introducing me to their neighbors. And a lot of folks that are here tonight are really involved and have been involved, but just bringing a friend along or explaining why things are so important in our city has made such a difference for me. So I want to thank those of y'all that really participated in that and also voted. It reminded me about how much so many people love Chattahoochee Hills, and that was part of my message. And I realized that people really do feel that way when you take the time and take a moment and just share how you're really feeling about things because I think we all really have a common goal, and and that was great to hear. So I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to be able to continue to serve the city next year as well. So I just want to thank y'all.
Scott?
Just responding to to some of the comments that were made, I I I think we all felt how heartfelt Kerry Carter's comments were. And and this idea of of talking to your neighbors and this and in a city that's still so small, you can actually interact directly with anybody pretty much. And I I so appreciate that. And in District Three, our most rural district, spend so much time talking to neighbors, Charlie. See, I see Kerry's family as neighbors. There are so many people that we can all interact with directly. And I think one of the things that would that is worth keeping in mind is that we're still small enough to all interact face to face and have actual conversations. And as as Kerry said, I'm not, I don't participate in any social media. I hear things about it. Sounds awful. And I and I I like the idea that people might drop out of that level of discourse and actually engage, as Camille said, just friend, friend of, to know people. I think that I what's clear is we all love Chattahoochee Hills. There's no doubt about it. Why go to war? And so and then to on a couple of other other notes regarding the comment about rules, I I I didn't, I I just want to point out that I was citing extant rules and and not talking about the rules themselves, about their application. I think one of the things that we can look forward to working together in further work of this council and then with our new council, our newly elected and and new mayor, is to amend not only this, but also to, as part of comp plan process, to commit the city to fully and transparently following all of our rules. And in the ongoing work in the ethics, ethics rule establishment, which we had a really good conversation with, and Rick's done a bunch of good work to provide us with a with a jump forward on that. I I think I'd just like to end by thanking all my colleagues, present and future, for that good work, which I think will strengthen this foundation, this wonderful town that that we all do love, meet together and talk about reasonably. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I love looking out and seeing people that support Chattahoochee Hills, that support the vision, especially love looking to my right. I'm used to seeing Kathy and my dad, but tonight, my mom is here. Thank you for coming. I'm proud to be your son. It's an honor. Thank you. I always have to get that in. Angela checks me off on that. I'm excited about our city. It's been a very important election, and it's been on my mind. It's feels like we've been in this season since July, and in a way, we have. And, you know, every time we have a public meeting, we have that podium right there, and everyone is allowed three minutes. That's never, Rick, I want to ask you, have we ever denied anyone their public comment?
No.
We don't do that. And it's a cornerstone of how we do things. And this past Tuesday, we saw this principle on a massive scale. Every voice in this city was heard. Every voice in this city was heard loud and clear. We are listening, and Tuesday night, the whole city heard you. It's loud and clear. We're coming together. It was a mandate. And like we've heard from Ms. Hannah, it was an unprecedented voter turnout. And like we've heard from Ms. Hannah, it was an unprecedented voter turnout, nothing like it in the past. I believe it was double most elections for our city. And that speaks volumes. And the candidates, they had, their messages were clear. If you came to the forum or watched the forum, their messages were very clear. They're very opposing messages, but they were very clear. And our city responded loud and clear. When we think about seventy thirty, what comes to mind is our zoning, save seventy percent, develop thirty percent. But now something actually kind of comes to mind because a lot of the outcomes were seventy percent or greater in our election. So that to me says we're coming together. We love Chat Hills. We want to protect it. The people that were elected were elected to help protect our zoning, to strengthen our zoning, to preserve more land, to make our green space acreage that we count increase. I mean, it's crystal clear. It's a tough standard for developers to reach our zoning. And I don't have a problem with that. Our zoning is what I care about. I love it. I'm incredibly proud of our city. We are one city. And there were lots of write notes every meeting about the good news that we hear. And the donation for the Will Beautiful Universal Access Trail speaks volumes to me. It really does. It is amazing when you have someone that is not as mobile as other people and they're able to get out and see part of our beautiful parks. Just today, I took someone to see Cochran Mill Park. They'd never been there and they were on and on how beautiful it is. And we were able to just walk around. And when someone's not able just to walk around freely and for them to be able to see the beautiful nature in action in our city, that is heartfelt gratitude and thank you. Your actions speak loud and clear. So thank you. And the other gift that keeps on giving with Keith Ruth donating land so that whatever the council decides in the future, there'll be access from Hutchinson Ferry Park to Riverlands Park. Again, that's incredible. And my dad has reminded me this, increasing the parks is the gift that keeps on giving forever. So I love that. I love seeing that. And come next month for part two with Ms. Diana Wilson, I'll save that, although I had it written down. And the farm signs about making farming viable again in our city is all exciting. I'm so excited. I'm very happy. Heartfelt. Thank you for all that have come to this meeting tonight.
So I want to offer my thanks to to everybody that came out and voted. It is gratifying when you think about how much people were engaged in the future of the city. And again, people have slightly different perspectives. I think a lot of times the process magnifies the differences. I don't think they're often as grand as people think they are. And I think it may take us a minute to get out of the habit of shouting at each other because I know that people have been doing that quite a bit, but the community is strong. This is a strong community and people came out to fight for what they believe in in this community. We've shown again how much everybody cares about the future of this place. I want to congratulate Camille and Tim and Angela. It's it's hard work running for office. It takes a lot to put yourself out there. If you've watched, you see that sometimes people that are up here get abuse and you know you're signing up for that. And again, just appreciate people that are willing to step up and and do that. Rodney pointed out the seventy thirty percentage for Camille's vote, and that really resonated for me as well. It's a it's a ratification by the grand majority of this community of what we're doing, this vision that we're working for. And it's just a poetic resonance, right? This idea that seventy thirty was also the election total. And it feels like it's not just human hands driving something like that. It just feels really amazing to me. And you know, if you think about, I don't know if anybody got to see Tim Southard's video that he presented a couple of times of the aerial photography of this region for the last twenty years. And you can see little Serenby down there growing a little bit, but everything around us just is filling in, filling in, filling in warehouses and all of that. And you know, the proof of the pudding of our zoning is visible on the ground here everywhere around us. We've had development, but you can barely tell it's there. The successes that we've had have all come from collaboration. You think about when we got together to create this city, right? People from every corner of town got together and worked their butts off to make sure that we were able to protect this place. When we bought the parks, right? That was citizens in the community too, raising money to make that happen. And just one thing after another where the communities come together. And it's always these times when we come together that we get the good things done, right? And the first comp plan was one of those opportunities, hundreds and hundreds of people from the community came together, and that is where the zoning came from. And we have that opportunity again, and I just hope people really lean into that. You know, the idea of of expanding on and perfecting our zoning, because nothing's ever perfect. You can always make things better, right? Getting together and doing that, expanding the parks, adding to the parks, the the good works that we're doing is just such a a team effort, needs to be a team effort. So I really do hope that people kind of walk away from anger to try hard to come back together. We've all been on the same side and the opposite side of different conversations. And I'm still friends with people that I disagree with sometimes, right? That's that's okay. It's the way that works. Hannah, I appreciate so much you calling out some of those names. You had me almost in tears before you said my name. And I I appreciate that. You know, people like Chuck and Mamie Miller that that were so involved for so long and that are gone. And you know, you think about this over the arc of twenty years here. I was talking to, and I'm sorry, you're going to have to just forgive me tonight. I was talking to Ruby about this. My very first civic effort here was when we were trying to annex into Palmetto. And I met a lady then that was pregnant, probably the second person I talked to getting signatures for the petition to annex into Palmetto. And I just saw her last night and she was showing me pictures of her nineteen year old who has a scholarship to Cornell to play football, right? And that kid's come in here at council meetings three or four times, when he was three, when he was ten. Remember the mayor, you know, and and it's just so special that this community has that level of connectivity, right? Where you can know people from every corner. It's Petersburg Road, right? I mean, every corner of the community. And and building on that foundation, right, is huge. Mad at the city, you're mad at me. Great. I'm not going to be in this chair, right? Take that anger, turn the page, right? Give these new folks an opportunity, lean in to helping them make this the best place it can be, please. Thank you very much. I will see you at the Fall Festival. And that's it. No, I know that. I know that. That's it for the this part of the meeting. We do have an executive session. The way these work is that we leave the regular meeting, we go off and talk about this thing, we come back and adjourn. So all of that to say it will not hurt our feelings if you leave in the meantime, because we're not going to do anything when we get back. Somewhere or another, there were a bunch of brownies. I don't know where they went, but they're supposed to be here. Somebody get the brownies to hand out. And we'll see y'all later. Can I get a motion in a second, please, to move out of the regular session?
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Rodney and and Scott?
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.